We'll call the Powell Select Board, regular meeting Thursday, April 18th, 2013, to order at 7:00 PM. For the agenda approval, approval of minutes for 8:13 and for 11:13. Warrants, mail, old business, Town Forester, Artary Woodland Manager update, and possible timber harvest. To be added, a letter to the auditors with this board's approval, that's under old business. And under new business to be added, warrant signing. With those two additions...
Making motion, approve.
Another second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the minutes for 8:13, that was Monday's special meeting.
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting for 11:13, regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Payroll in the amount of $5,659.97. Counts payable for 1913 in the amount of $20,323.78. Your large ones here are your Green Mountain Power, $7,035. Waste Water, $6,159. And some cleanups and some payroll transfers. Again, $20,323.78. For that, I'll take a motion on the warrants.
Motion.
Just a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Would they accept abstention on payroll? Grandson checking there. We have wait permit from Martel Excavating. All the paperwork's together, our road foreman has signed it. What is your pleasure?
Motion to sign.
Favor?
Aye.
And... Lost my date here for... Okay. We have a tobacco license renewal application, and also we have a liquor license renewal application, and it is for next door beer and wine, both of them to be in the same next door beer and wine.
Motion.
Second. It's on both now?
Yep. Motion on both.
Okay. And a second on both, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the Tour of Dragons is coming into this area, the Director of the Volunteers for the Tour of Dragons Bike Race, which happens in Bennington in Manchester on the 4th and 5th of May. We have volunteer reimbursement programs for groups of individuals who work on behalf of this nonprofit. It's a great way for nonprofits to earn some extra money for their cause. Please let us know, Green Up would be interesting in participating. We have a number here, the Director of Volunteers, to go with that, if anybody's interested.
Is that for Green Up, Vermont?
It could be involved with it. It's Tour of the Dragons Bike.
It's for the bicycle race.
Right.
Run care.
That's bike, May 4th and 5th, and I think our Green Ups on that same day is why it could've got involved in it. Okay, we have electronic recycling at the Dorset School, Saturday, May 4th, from 9:00 until noon. This is not limited to Dorset residents. A variety of electronics and accessories will be accepted, computers, laptop printers, phone cartridges, televisions, monitors, UPS battery backup, stereo equipment, satellite dishes, et cetera, et cetera. Again, electronic recycling, Dorset School, Saturday, May 4th, 9:00 to noon. Okay, we have a letter from the Bennington County Regional Commissioners. Annual understanding between the BCR and the Town of Powell for the household hazardous waste grant funding. Please sign both copies and mail one back to the BRC. This is our regular contract we have with them. We need a motion to sign both copies on this.
Motion.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Free Hazardous Household Waste Collection Day, Saturday, May 11th, 2013, rain or shine, 9:00 to 12:00 noon, Shasberry Solid Waste Facility, 536 North Road, Shasberry, Vermont. No permit is required. Hazardous Waste Collection, Saturday, May 11th, Shasberry. And there's a long list of things that can go up there. If anybody hasn't been informed, we'll have a copy of that here, I'm sure. Have a Bennington County Regional Commission Annual Meeting, Thursday, May 16th, 2013, at 5:00 PM at the Country Club. That's something usually several members from this board go to. We have a few days to think about it, so... Spring Planning for Zoning Forum, City, Towns and Leagues, Wednesdays, Wednesday, May Lake Morley Resort, Fairleigh, Vermont. That concludes our mail. Old Business, Town Forester. Mr. Richardson, you can come to the table, please.
Come to the table?
Sure. Then people can hear you.
Right.
We thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. I have to admit that I've been a little lax, I think, in my duties here. I think when I was here, probably about last year at this time, wasn't it? I was supposed to get some timber mark for you up in the Halifax Hollow region, and things got put off anyway, and I have not completed that as of this date, so that's pretty much where it stands right now. If you still wish for me to proceed with this project, then, you know, it's definitely something that I would put to the top of the list, you know? Things, work-wise, just didn't...
We do understand that, and that's why we got back on our regard.
Right. You know, things have changed in what I've been doing and who I've been doing it with, and, you know, last year was trying to keep two mouths fed at the same time, and now we're back to one, so a little bit more flexibility with what I can do and, you know, try to move this forward for you if you...
Yeah, when we talked last, if I'm not mistaken, there was some discussion about this might be the right time to do it this year?
Well, you know, during, as I said before, you know, summer months are where we, when we should be looking at trying to harvest in that area, just because of the severity of the slopes and everything involved there. You know, dry season is definitely the best time. Timber markets overall, I don't think have really changed a whole lot in the last year, you know? There's still, you know, decent markets available for most species that are involved, and, you know, I don't see any big price increases or price decreases, so we're kind of in pretty stable, stable mode right now, and have been here for a while, so I don't think it's, you know, we're definitely not going to get the prices you had five, six years ago.
Right.
Things have pretty much settled out.
Well, what my thought was, and I'm sure the board is, with finances and everything, with the timing being proper...
Right.
...to manage them comfortably where we get the income and manage the forest at the same time, where it works out both way, whether the market's at peak or not.
Right.
If it works the best for the town and the forest at the same time.
Yeah, sometimes, you know, you have to make the decision to cut even though you're not going to get optimum prices, just for the benefits, other benefits that are involved, but...
The last time you were here, Bruce, you said that property that Barlow and his brother-in-law owned, or somebody?
Yes.
Or maybe just the brother-in-law owns it all now?
That's right, the brother...
You were talking about doing that, that would be done at the same time? You were there, Forester, also?
Right, because of the way that the properties are configured and...
Same building, stuff, right.
Yes, that would still be the process. I talked with Mr. Boyce here, oh, maybe three weeks ago...
Okay.
...or so, and still have that in mind, you know, having him come up and take a look at what will be entailed with this joint effort, so...
You know, my thoughts are, I mean, if it doesn't tear up the mountain twice, and the roadways, you've got to put them back the way they were.
Well, right, plus, you know, you know, any temporary...
If you've got an agreement to do something, you might as well both get your wood out and fix it back up and be done with it.
For sure, you know, plus, there's, you know, some other landlords involved too that may or may not, you know...
Right.
Have some say, but we'd like to include them and make sure that we have all our bases covered, just so that, you know, we don't get started and then have somebody come forward and say, "Listen, you didn't," you know, "Nobody talked to us about this," so we'd like to keep good neighbors with everybody, and, you know, a temporary, written temporary agreement would be drawn up with everybody involved, just to cover everybody along the way, so...
So when do you think you would start this?
Well, I would have to get up there and get marking here, you know, in the very near future, to get this going for a summertime, you know, project, so, you know, within the next month, I would like to...
What we will do, then, we will wait to hear from you again, and you can give us an update on how we stand with it.
Yeah, if you know when your meetings are, say roughly, you know, in a month's time, or whatever, then...
Yep, we meet every Thursday, except the 4th Thursday, which is summer board meeting.
Oh, okay.
So, whatever's convenient for you to come in at any Thursday, just contact...
All right, I'll contact.
Linda, we can set it up.
All right. All right. Any other questions, or...
Any questions from board, anything?
Please take form.
Yep.
All right.
We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, with last week's meeting, and the write-up in the paper, after our auditors visit us, I didn't think the write-up and the banner really gave us a true feeling on how we felt on what was said and how we were reacting to this situation that we've been involved with, with our auditors. I thought we come off quite poorly between both stands. What I would like to do is, again, try to set this record straight on what we're doing and what this board tries to do, working with the situation, working with the auditors, and so on. So, with this board's permission, I would like to have a letter sent to the auditors, meeting them probably at our next official meeting, which would be the second, and to have them bring forward evidence on what they have found, not guesswork, of the 10, or the 12, or the 15,000, or whatever, that we keep hearing erroneous figures with no backup to. To get actual figures, to find out what actually is happening, so we can deal with accordingly. This has been going on for some time now, and we seem to dance around this. I'd like to get the exact figures, what they have presently, and see if it is worth working forward with. And I guess that's the way to just put point blank, bring us what you've got, that you can show us correct, and we'll move forward from there, if it pertains to doing such. I don't want a two-hour meeting with them where we get into a shouting contest back and forth. I want this board to have the actual facts, what's there, not assumptions, not figures that may or may not be, not a thread that's being dragged through the knot holes and turns into a cable when it gets to us, something we can actually say, "This is it." So, how we put that into a letter, Linda and I will work on that if you wish, and direct it to them to bring to us.
One of the things that Ray said last week, or one of the last meeting, was that it wasn't in the minutes. Can we get copies of the previous time we were here? Because I think somebody made a motion, approved...
I was quite sure that we actually called a motion and voted on it. Our minutes didn't reflect that. We are a little bit narrow there, too, because we actually read our minutes and we didn't catch it. There is a statement in there that says that we put a period and moved forward. We all might have assumed that was where we stopped it, but I do believe there was a motion, but maybe that's why it... It's hard when we get into these long meetings that goes back and forth so much, things get very confusing back and forth, and what's said, how it's said, and where we actually ended up. The motion is out there from last week, that we put a period at it, not to go back to '09. I've talked to cities, towns, and leagues over the phone, and actually the state auditor, which referred us to them, and talked to them again Saturday at our meeting up there, our seminar, and because of the publicity that makes us look like we may not be addressing this properly by looking into it, that we really need exact figures, not guesstimates, not a thread. We need, if there's actual stuff out there that's got some basis to it, that is structurally sound and for real, we need it. If it's guesswork, we need to put a stop to this, because the town's morale, this board's morale, our employees' morale, this is not good for anybody, and it can't continue.
Besides the auditors coming here, Linda, you'll be here, do we need anybody else here? Do we need the town treasurer? Do we need anybody else at this meeting?
It probably wouldn't hurt. It would probably be nice to actually at least have the treasurer here, if she can make it.
I mean, you know...
It's a good point, yes.
Depending on how far this reaches out and who it touches, or if it touches anybody. Think we should invite as many people that pertain to this to that meeting?
I'm all frustrating the thing out, but we also, don't we have, aren't they coming in on a 3rd Thursday to give us that presentation?
Yeah.
That was the impression I had.
They wanted to set up a meeting with us annually, every, they wanted to meet with us once a month, and we set up the 3rd Thursday.
Right, and I mean, that's the 3rd Thursday, so I mean, if they get, if, I don't know how much, I want this thing put to bed also. I want the, whatever information there is, I want it brought to light, and I want, you know, then we can move on. I got no problem with that. The only thing is, I mean, I don't know if they could be quite complete by...
About two weeks?
At it probably is.
Supposedly, we've got it. Supposedly, we've got all the information.
Supposedly, we has it, so if he's got it, then good enough. Bring it in, and then we'll present, we'll put everything out on the table, and here it is.
And it would be nice, too, if whatever information they bring to the table, if there's copies for each of us, so we can follow along with the presentation, and line by line, whatever.
But we want it to be facts, not this, it could be this much and all that.
Yeah.
Yep, the proof back up to it. So is that a motion?
At this time, I'd make a motion.
Oh, second. Okay, we have a motion in a second.
What are we voting on?
To go to have the letter sent to them.
May 2nd, right?
Yep, for our May 2nd meeting, bringing their information, and having our treasurer come in.
Complete information.
Okay, so let me just understand, is they're coming in May 2nd, and then the 3rd Thursday?
That'll be up to them. They want to come once a month to just regularly meet with us, so this is something totally different.
We're just speeding them up, but I don't know if that's wise, myself, what difference it make in two weeks?
Well, I just, the sooner we get it put to bed, I think, is...
I want it, I want it put to bed also.
Yeah.
But I also want, I mean, they have been, one thing is, no matter what anybody says, he's always gave paperwork, and when the paperwork comes in, we'll get a chance to look at it. Now, I don't want to give him forever to do it either, but if he couldn't possibly do it, within, I mean, the letter is, if we're just trying to get something that he can't possibly get in, and he said he could have it by the 3rd week, the 3rd Thursday of the month. Now, maybe he possibly can, and if he can have it earlier, quick, better, good, get it in, but as far as if he ain't quite done, because I want to see it in black and white, and I don't want to have to be hashing this thing over and over and over again all summer long. It's foolishness. We got to get it done, get it taken care of, and we got to get an understanding, as far as I'm concerned, amongst the people in the town, that we got to work together, period. No matter if you like people or you don't like people, we got to work together, it's all there is to it.
I'm going to compile something out there, if we're going to go ahead with this letter, that we state in the letter that if you are not ready to come up to the table with your information by May 2nd, then we'll hold it for that 3rd Thursday.
Well, if we're going to do that, being we got to invite Ellen and stuff in, why don't we just move it to that 3rd Thursday?
Well, I think that was, that's a schedule that they brought forward to us, so I mean, I'm thinking for sure they'll have their information available at that time. Now, I mean, if, as far as two more weeks, as long as we ain't hashing it around anymore and causing any more dissension and everything else, let them get their work done and bring it in.
My biggest question there is, and I stand to this, and I think this board does, or at least the majority, that we told them, "No more," going back into '09. We motioned on it last week again, for the second time, to stop this going back. They supposedly got the information, and that's why...
They have the, all the information from 2009, 2010, 2011, 2012.
Right, to find these monies and these problems.
Well, that's what he stated at the meeting. He said he had all the information, and it wouldn't take him very long to put it all together, so...
That's why I rushed the meeting up, instead of waiting till their, their regular meeting that they wanted to meet with us on, so we could put it...
I feel we should just hold off to the...
All right, go to the 3rd.
Go to the 3rd.
I don't have a problem with that, I just, I don't want to see a whole lot of inventory been done back into '09 that we get billed for, when we motioned not to be going back there.
I don't think we have too much control over that. If that's going to be his starting, or their starting point, excuse me, that's going to be their starting point, you know? What we do with it from there, once we see the information...
It's supposed to be the last, it's supposed to be the last fiscal year.
If he's all hooked up starting in '09, what's wrong with the previous years? I mean, if he's going to go back '09, he must've go back to 1977. Imagine his errors back there, too?
Mm-hmm.
You know, and you're only supposed to go back a year.
To try to bring us up to where we should be, errors made should be brought to us so we can correctively make them, or correct them so they're not continuing to be made. And it's blown way out of proportion from what it started as to what it is now, and it's, it's almost like we're not fulfilling our duties to the town as a board, that the taxpayers' money has been swandered and spent poorly. And what everybody seems to be missing, or at least a certain few, is we're not just select board members, we happen to be taxpayers also. We are part of this community, so any monies that aren't handled correctly are part of us, too. So we are trying to do the right thing and to curb this. There's question whether we could even correct it, if it could be corrected, back that far, number one. The main issue is for it not to continue in current year where we are, and we've spent so much time in the past, we haven't got to the current the way we should, and that's why we need to end this, so. With this, without dwelling on it for another hour, if we want to make it for the 3rd, I don't have a problem. I don't think anybody does, do you? Any questions on the 3rd week?
Get it done, get it in here, and...
Get it over with, and...
Amendment to make it 3rd Thursday.
Okay, in one, second, all right. Okay, so it's amended to the 3rd?
Thursday.
Of what month?
This month.
Well, it'll be...
Or May.
May.
Rather. And invite Ellen in also on that one. So I have a motion in a second, we have all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you got all that, Linda? Okay, now, the only other thing we had that was brought up to me was on our warrants, and I don't believe we've got to go through this, I was told we have to make a motion to who signs the warrants when there's not a meeting. We've already done that when we reorganized, the chair signs, and if the chair's not available, the vice chair signs. That's already in our minutes, that's in our reorganization. But in this, it's been, I was notified to the fact that not everyone, we don't have a meeting, say, tonight, and next week, the board comes in, I've signed the warrants. The board does not have to sign those warrants. They've already been signed, they've already been acted upon, checks have been cut. You're supposed to read the warrants and see what was there, but as far as signing them, that's all done, it's been over. So it says we do not have to sign them. My personal feeling is, I guess that's the standard of the law. I would like to add to that, that we, the board members that come in to read them... I would like to add to that, that we, the board members that come in to read them when it's already a signed warrant, initial them, that we know that Dale, Mike was here, Rich wasn't, because Rich didn't initial them, he was out that night. So, then we know Ronnie, Mike and Dale initialed them, they read the warrants. It's just, it's a nicer paper trail. So, instead of signing them, just initial them, so we know that there was no meeting, the chair or the vice chair signed them, the next meeting, everybody initials the warrants that were signed by the person that was, that did sign them.
Yeah, that way there, it keeps it so a person can't say, "Well, I didn't see it."
Right.
It was seen initially, and we do it once a month anyway, because we have the warrants from...
Sewer board meeting.
From the sewer board meeting, we don't sign the warrants then, look at them the following week. So, I don't see any problem with that. I think they ought to be initial, just for posterity or whatever.
Okay, is that, put that into a motion, so we get that in our minutes?
We'll move it. I make a motion that when we, the warrants aren't, we don't have a meeting, and they have warrants for that week, if they're signed by the chair or the vice chair, that the other members, when they look at them and read them, that they initial them.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, with that said, if there's nothing for us?
Well, maybe we should just touch on the seminar up in Rutland.
Sure, absolutely.
A little bit that we all attended up at the Holiday Inn in Rutland for the Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns. It was my first, along with three other board members, and it was very informative. I also have a Selectman's Handbook now, which is going to be here at the town, two copies.
Yeah, we have one here and one for...
And one for a floater, covers a lot of issues. It was a good brush-up, I assume, for you three. I can't speak for you, but I think it was money well-spent and learned a lot, so...
And what's nice is, there was almost 100 people there, actually visiting with other people that have different situations in their towns that are similar but different, but to voice concerns throughout the state's kind of interesting, so...
And the Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns, their representatives, very knowledgeable, very helpful, and if they didn't have the answer, they were more than ready to say, "Call me, email me, I'll find out, I'll get back to you," so it's a nice resource, and we're not the only town in the state of Vermont that has issues, so, believe me, if you sat in that meeting, we're okay.
And it's nice, nice to meet people that you will be actually talking to later in the year through phone messages or something, getting information, to actually have a face with a name, so it's, we've worked with them for years, I have, years I've been on, and pretty resourceful and a pretty good group of people to work with, so...
I think they were pleasantly surprised, you see practically the whole board up there too.
Yeah. On another note, I also did get a few phone calls about the train that came through. It came through later than anticipated. I guess it didn't touch around here till almost 4:00 in the afternoon.
We didn't miss it by much then.
So, but from what I understand, it was quite a sight, and actually came through north Bennington, so, they came, Sunday, it came back down through north Bennington, so I apologize for the delay. Again, I said it was only a guesstimate, but it was a nice day to hang out at the tracks.
Yep, we were in school, we couldn't be helped. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Sure, sweet.